of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021 at 7:30 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Levering and Alderman Schmidt will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with the Spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Alderman, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the Agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 858-2721-9596. The passcode is 357332. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the National Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Cleaver.
You won't be joining us this evening.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm alone. I can hear everyone.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'm present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Lopez.
I'm here. I'm alone. I can hear and see everyone.
Alderman Tenza.
I'm present. I am alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone and I can hear you.
Alderman Jerry.
I'm here alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present, alone and can hear everyone.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Cleaver.
You're on mute. Skip.
And I'm joined by my daughter. Sorry about that. I can hear the proceedings.
Nice to see you.
Alderman Harris. Catherine.
I am present. I'm in this room alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I am present. I am alone and I can hear everyone.
You have 13 in attendance.
Thank you. Also an attendance this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. Well, on your desk tonight, you see the fiscal '22 budget, fiscal year '22 budget that I am proposing. It is a $290 million general fund budget. Now, Madam President, I would like to stress something at the beginning, which if it were not for the actions that the state of New Hampshire has taken, which I will mention in a minute, if it were not for what the state has done, the city tax rate based on this budget would be flat or actually decline this coming fall. However, as we've discussed, the state is slamming Nashville with $11.8 million of increased costs and lower state aid. These two things, this translates to a 5.5% tax increase imposed by the state of New Hampshire. So I've been working hard with departments to try to make up for the state's approach of using the cities and towns of New Hampshire as their cash register. Although I'm proposing that we offset these state actions by cutting many city department budgets below the level of the current year, the total city budget I am proposing as a result of what the state has been doing could result in a tax increase of between 3% and 4%. But again, if the state were to neutralize its actions, the tax rate would be flat or go down. Now, as part of the budget, I'm assuming that $4.4 million of the funds the city will receive from the federal government as part of the American Rescue Plan can be applied to offset some of the reduced school aid. Now, the guidelines for the American Rescue Plan funds just came out yesterday, so everyone across the country is studying those very carefully. But it appears that our estimate that we'd be able to use these funds to replace some of the lost revenue is accurate, and therefore that will help us a little bit in offsetting what the state has been doing. Now, we are still facing, you know, a number of major financial challenges. Of course, the pandemic, COVID-19, and again, the state's decision to increase the city's pension cost by $4.4 million to a total of $29 million. The state's decision to reduce school aid by $7.4 million. And of course, the rising healthcare costs for city employees, not on the city's new HMO plan. In order to offset the state's tax increase caused by these actions as much as possible, I asked City Hall and the city departments to send me budgets that were level funded from the current year, level funded. And I want to thank the departments that worked hard to help our city taxpayers, our hardworking taxpayers. So the City Hall budget is down, City Hall budget as a whole is down 2.7% from the current year. Public Works is down about 1.8% from the current year. And the National Public Library has a budget which is down 1.9% from the current year. Now, that took a lot of discipline on behalf of our departments, and in part, it is due to the fact that for those employees, the new HMO plan is in effect and healthcare costs declined for those groups of employees. So I want to thank those employees for agreeing to work with us and helping us to control costs with an HMO plan that I believe benefits everyone because their weekly contributions go down as well. Now, some of the departments, well, at the beginning, because of these financial challenges, I asked most departments to try to live with a 0% increase. Some of our independent departments have felt they couldn't do this. The Fire Department proposed budgets up 4% and the Police about 2.6%. I've been talking for some years about building unsustainable budgets with these independent departments, and I think we might be at that point. Certainly, I appreciate all of the work that our firefighters and police officers have done for the city, but as mayor, it is my job to also consider the taxpayers of Nashville. Now, if the budget requests are approved as proposed, the budgets will be up considerably over the last six years. And the numbers for that are in the budget book on page 10. So I have proposed in the budget I have submitted to you, Madam President, compromises with those two departments. Instead of the 0% I asked for, instead of their requests, I proposed a cost of living increase for both departments at 1.7%. So this is my effort to compromise and try to reach a reasonable budget and also a minimum, the lowest tax increase we can deliver. Now, in developing my budget guidelines, I treated the school department separately because of the learning loss, which resulted for a number of children as a result of months of online learning. I want to make sure that we do everything we can to keep all children, all Nashville's children, reading and computing at grade level. So at the beginning, I asked the school department to submit a budget including an increase of no more than 1.5%. Other departments, as I said, I suggested zero, excluding the cost of pensions and healthcare. Now, the school department budget that they submitted is up 1.7% when those two items are excluded. And if the cost of healthcare for school employees is included, the budget is up 2.6%. But the issue of whether the new healthcare plan for the school department will be included, of course, is outstanding because there are ongoing negotiations. With the school department, I split the difference between my guidance and their proposed budget, and I reduced their request by 119,000. Now, at the same time that we're trying to hold these budgets in line, trying to offset everything that the state has done, we are still making a number of improvements for our residents, including the continuation of our paving plan of action, the implementation of the Nashville River Master Plan, which will enhance the beauty of our river, a downtown performing arts center, which will build a stronger downtown economy, our middle school improvement plan that will result in three schools, which are state-of-the-art and all solar powered. One thing that I, new thing that I have proposed in the capital improvement section of the budget, Madam President, is the purchase of body cameras for the police department. An improvement that was requested by the police department several months ago. We didn't have the money then, but I think we can fund it in the budget now. Well, this has not been an easy year. We know there are better days ahead, and these ongoing projects signal a strong and vibrant future for Nashville. Now, also on the agenda, Madam President, is Resolution 21143, which would place on the ballot the question, which would give to the voters, if approved by the Board of Alderman, would allow the people to decide whether they want our local government to make appointments to the National Police Commission, or whether they want to continue having the state make those appointments. I'm joined by a number of members of the Board of Alderman, and I'm sure, Madam President, you will refer this to a committee, and we can discuss that in detail in the months ahead or in the weeks ahead. The American Rescue Plan, I just wanted to mention that, again, the guidelines are out. The U.S. Conference of Mayors is holding various meetings. We've talked about it with some of the other cities. Our CFO is examining the interim regulations is what have been issued. So we will be reporting to you, Madam President, the Board of Alderman regarding what we think can be done with those funds, making recommendations. And of course, those funds could not be used or allocated without a vote of the Board of Alderman. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention or discuss what I usually discuss at the beginning, but I postponed to the end because of all the budget issues that we have or the introduction of the city budget, which is COVID-19. We continue to see progress with respect to the number of cases that we have. The number of active cases is now slightly over 100. A few weeks ago, it was almost 250. In the fall, late fall, and in January, that number went up into the 600s. So we're doing better, but there's been a bit of a plateau over the last couple of weeks. Right now, the Nashville population, 27% as of May 3rd. So these numbers are a week old, and therefore the numbers are probably a little higher. But 27% of the Nashville population is fully vaccinated. Our Health Department is continuing to work hard to reach the vulnerable populations, people less likely to get vaccinated without the outreach by the Health Department. Also, of course, the state is continuing to offer clinics. Right now, the city has administered the city Health Department about 15,000 doses of COVID-19 vaccine. So, Madam President, we need to continue to exercise caution. Urge all of our residents to get vaccinated. It is a safe vaccine, a lot better than getting COVID-19. I, and I know many of the members of the board have gotten vaccinated, and here we are, certainly the better for it. Also, we need to continue to exercise caution until we get our vaccination rates up a little higher with wearing masks indoors and also with social distancing. So, excuse me, Madam President, so we're optimistic that as more and more people get vaccinated, the extent of the spread of the COVID-19 virus will decline further. But again, we need to continue to exercise vigilance. So, Madam President, that's all I have. I look forward to working with you and the Board of Alderman in terms of trying to come up with a budget that works for both our citizens in terms of quality of service and our taxpayers in the sense of the most reasonable tax rate we can arrive at. And again, a return to the beginning that the state of New Hampshire is not doing us any favors in terms of hitting us with these extra, all these extra stresses, financial stresses right in the middle of a pandemic. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Alderman Lopez.
I have a quick question about the renovations to City Hall. I know as, I'm not even actually certain when the Governor's order expires, that we use the beginning of the meeting to clarify why we're meeting remotely. But if it hasn't expired yet, it's on its way. But the Aldermanic Chamber isn't really ready for public use either. Last time I went in there, there was a pretty impressive pile of chairs and furniture and stuff. So I'm guessing it has been pulled into the whole renovation scheme. Do we have a timeline on, number one, when those renovations are going to be done? And then, number two, any guidance from Public Health over when and how we should manage meeting publicly?
I do have a meeting scheduled next week, a meet with the mayor and a few city staff to talk about reopening City Hall. But nothing definite, and all the stuff that was in the Aldermanic Chamber was there temporarily, but it's all gone now, so.
Oh, okay. I haven't been there this week.
That a little bit. So, as you might have seen, I'm sure you have, the motor vehicle area has been fully renovated and is now being used down on the first floor, still by appointment. The tax area has been completed, and substantial work has been done at the City Clerk's area, making it sort of a similar setup as you see for the motor vehicles. Now, we think that the work will be done by the end of June, so the, I think our tentative plan is to open City Hall corresponding with when the work has been done, is done, which means somewhere between the middle and late June. And that is the, you know, the most definite information we have.
Alderman Lopez.
I just feel like it's worth pointing out to the public that I'm sitting in front of a virtual background. See, it's not real. So this is not what the actual Aldermanic Chamber looks like, and that's what we were talking about. I just realized that bringing the topic up while doing this is probably confusing.
All set. Alderman Lopez.
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Dow.
Yes. Now that we have the budget in hand, Donna and I have been working diligently with the mayor's office and the department heads to formulate a budget review schedule. All the members, everyone got a copy of the schedule this evening just before this meeting, and I'd like you to review it. I have to give priority to the members of the Budget Committee, but I would like to have a final input no later than Friday, since the first budget meeting, review meeting is the 20th, Thursday, May 20th at 7:00 PM on Zoom, and it's General Government, Emergency Preparedness and Administrative Services. So if there are anybody on the Budget Committee that has conflicts, please let me know. If we have a significant number of conflicts, that would probably prompt a change in the meeting, but it was very difficult since we're starting the budget process later than we normally do, and the entire budget has to be passed, fully passed by the end of June, and we're already well into May. So the dates are tight, and the major departments have a night of their own, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion. So, thank you.
Anyone else respond to the remarks of the mayor? Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, you brought up R. 21143, and I just wanted to ask the proposal that the Police Commission be appointed other than it is now, did that come out of the master planning process?
Well, certainly people have been thinking about this for a long time, but the master plan is a land use document. So what the master plan does is look at various areas of the city to determine, you know, how the city should try to guide development basically in the future. So this, you know, isn't a subject of discussion for the, you know, the way the Police Commission is appointed is not a subject of discussion as part of master plan, but instead that has to do with the future growth of the community.
I see. Because I know that a poll was done. So the city did a poll on this question?
No, I sent out a survey to see what people thought regarding a couple of these questions related to the Police Commission.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection. I will declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Alderman meetings of April 26th and 27th, 2021, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Matt Sullivan, Planning Department Manager, regarding the referral from the Board of Alderman on O. 21058 to the National Planning Board, amending the floodplain management land use ordinance, and from Matt Sullivan, Planning Manager, and Sherry Dutzy, Chair of the National Conservation Commission, regarding the Board of Alderman's referral to the Conservation Commission on Ordinance O. 2158, from Dead Chisholm, Waterways Manager, regarding proposed modification to Land Use Code 190, Article 7, floodplain management, from Diane Thibodeau, Executive Assistant, Division of Public Works, regarding Board of Alderman referral on Resolution R. 21127, the bond, from Julie Chisholm, Transportation and Long Range Planner, regarding partnership with Bird Rides, Inc.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening.
Laura Cahoon.
Ms. Cahoon, name and address, and you have three minutes.
Fine. My name is Laura Cahoon. I live at 30 Greenwood Drive. I'm speaking out tonight against the amendment change to the city charter relative to the manner of appropriate appointments to the National Board of Police Commissions. This amendment has been on the books since September 1913, has worked well for the city of Nashville. There's an old saying that says, "If it's not broken, don't fix it." Currently, there are no politics within this election. However, if the city of Nashville puts this amendment in the hands of the mayor and the president of the Board of Aldermen, it will be a disaster. The mayor has already shown that he's only hiring like-minded people from his inner circle to boards and committees. This is apparent on the Public Works Board, where there are two people who are trying to do things for the benefit of the residents. However, the mail-voting block seems to override the board members that are actually representing the residents. Another example is there has been an open spot on the Board of Assessors for over two years. While residents have requested to take the spot to represent the Nashville residents, the mayor is not willing to give this spot out to anybody but from somebody from his inner circle. So the spot stays open, and there's nobody on the Board of Assessors that actually represents the residents. We currently have one Alderman trying to change the number of board members on the school board. She is working with Attorney Bolton on the backdoor charter change. Where is their transparency? Why the sneaky change? Problem here is that the Nashville residents want people to go on the Board of Education that actually are concerned about our children, not the politics, political views. The police commissioners should never be picked because the mayor likes them or are friends with the mayor. They should not be selected because of their party affiliation or their like-minded viewpoints. It needs to be a qualified person, female or male, with no personal ties to the mayor or the president of the Board of Aldermen. I am leery at this selection method for the police commissions. I live in the city of Nashville, not the kingdom of the mayor. Another thing I would like to bring up, the fact that the mayor has already wasted $44,383 in taxpayer funds to get a study on a dog park in downtown Nashville.
I don't think we're taking that up this evening, Ms. Cahoon.
$5,000 for a dog park. What is the mayor thinking? If the mayor has extra money lying around, apply it to the ever-increasing tax rate that the residents will be paying. The mayor should realize the city of Nashville just gave back $3,320,000 in property taxes.
Your time is up.
Commercial properties. Mayor also realizes a lot more.
Amber Logue.
Thank you. Amber Logue, resident of 20 Locke Street. I'm here to speak in favor of R-21-144, authorizing the purchase of property located at L. Pine Street, Map 77, Lot 5. This parcel of land is considered by many residents as a part of Mine Falls Park. On a beautiful day, you can find residents playing there with their kids or their dogs. I've seen yoga classes here. I've seen picnics. This is the gateway to Mine Falls from downtown. A few years ago, I was surprised to learn that the Milliard Association actually owns this land, and it's not, in fact, a part of Mine Falls at all. So it is considered to be unusable land. The option before us is to either watch it be paved over and become just another parking lot or use this land for what it's already naturally used for, which is a public park. It would not only preserve this land for future generations, but also meet the commitment of wetland protection that the city aims to have. I encourage the Board of Alderman to approve the passage of R. 21144 and ensure that this gateway to Mine Falls Park is secured for our residents. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam President.
Alderman Karen.
Yes. Can we remind people that this portion of public comment is for those items that the board is going to vote on, not on things that are being assigned to committees later in the meeting?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to give public comment on anything that is expected to be acted upon this evening?
Lori Ordolano.
Okay.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I was going to comment on the 144 and 143, but I will do that at the end of the meeting. But I would like to say with regard to the mayor's comments that the study he did or the survey he took or the poll regarding the Police Department, it would be nice if that was made public. So we just know what the outcome of that is, and I think that.
We're not taking action on that this evening.
Well, I know, but he brought it up. That's all.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to give public comment on items we're acting upon this evening? Seeing none. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Susan K. Lovering, City Clerk, regarding Organization for Refugee and Immigrant Success, ORS, Request to waive vendor license fees.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and refer it to the Budget Review Committee. Petitions.
Petition, or street renumbering, 5 Brookshire Street, Sheet 61B, Lot 30, and Sheet 61B, Lot 29.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to grant a petition for street renumbering at 5 Brookshire Street, Sheet 61B, Lot 30, and Sheet 61B, Lot 29, and to rename said property to 5 and 9 Brookshire Street by roll call. And Madam President, may I speak to my motion?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. At the last infrastructure meeting, we did get a chance to meet with the Nap family who live at a current address of number 9 Brookshire, and, excuse me, number 7 Brookshire, and they have been there for over 40 years. Yet the gentleman that owns number 7, it's a double-sized lot, it does meet the requirements and can't be subdivided. Although in a perfect world, we would like to have all our numbers in succession. But in my communication with the committee that we have in the city to correspond mostly for emergency response of 911 and direct conversations with the Fire Chief Rhodes, it was agreed and was sponsored by the Infrastructure Committee to go with this numbering of leaving number 7 as is, and to rename the property 5 and 9 Brookshire Street. So I hope you could support this motion.
Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Alderman Dow.
Sorry, yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens. Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 As and zero Ns.
And that motion carries.
A petition has.
Sorry, go ahead.
A petition has been received for a street layout of 44 Buck Meadow Road.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the petition for street layout of 44 Buck Meadow Road, as read, refer to the Nashville City Planning Board, and that a public hearing be scheduled for 30 days after the required notices are sent to the parties by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dow.
This is part of the middle school development program, and it's particularly the new middle school, where we're constructing the road to access the new middle school. And this is, it's like to refer to Clarus crossing Ts and dotting the Is. This road has been laid out by Heina Swanson-Harman, the city engineer, so everyone that needed to get an input into how the road should be laid out has done that. And I ask you to support this by roll call.
Any discussion on that motion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 As and zero Ns.
And that motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
There are none.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 26, 2021 Budget Review Committee to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the April 28, 2021 Committee on Infrastructure to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 3, 2021 Personnel, Administrative Affairs Committee to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 4, 2021 Planning and Economic Development Committee to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 5, 2021 Finance Committee to be accepted and placed on file. And there being no objection, I will move to suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Human Affairs Committee meeting held Monday, May 10, 2021, regarding proposed Resolution 21129. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. Human Affairs Committee met last night, and we discussed this piece of business. It is a grant that we get from the federal government every year for HOPWA, which is Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, and it passed unanimously in the committee last night.
Thank you. It is time-sensitive, according to, was it Bob Mack that spoke on it?
Yes, Bob Mack and Director Bagley both were just letting us know that it is time-sensitive to get these funds moving.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Okay. Confirmation of Mayor's appointments.
Cable Television Advisory Board.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Justin Chapman, 55 McKean Street, Nashua, to the Cable Television Advisory Board with a term to expire March 31, 2024. Mr. Chapman, you will be, the oath of office will be administered by Corporation Counsel.
Okay. Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Cable Television Advisory Board, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help you God. I do.
Congratulations, and thank you for coming forward. Appreciate it. You bet.
Cultural Connections Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following to the Cultural Connections Committee. Reappointment of Margaret Laurit, 40 Cimarron Drive, Nashua, with a term to expire February 1, 2024, and new appointment, Paul Shea, 102 Toll Street, Nashua, with a term to expire April 1, 2024. I know that Mr. Shea was with us. Do we also have Margaret Laurit with us this evening? I don't see her, but Mr. Shea, will the Corporation Counsel will administer the oath of office?
Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Cultural Connections Committee, according to the best of your ability and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help you God.
I do solemnly swear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Appreciate having you step forward again to do more work, but we know you're good at it, so thank you for that.
Nashville Arts Commission.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following to the Nashville Arts Commission. The reappointment of Lindsay Rinaldi, 705 Belmont Street, Boston, with a term to expire April 1, 2024. Is Lindsay with us this evening? I don't see her. She will be sworn in a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21121, changing the name of Veterans Drive to Honorary Drive, and changing the name of the Broad Street Parkway to Veterans Parkway.
Alderman Lopez.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 21121, as amended. I think it's, yeah.
No, we have to amend with the Goldenrod copy first.
Yeah, that's why I was confused. Okay, so I make a motion to amend with the Goldenrod copy, and then I hope everybody will support.
The motion is to amend by replacing R. 121124 with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Committee on Infrastructure by roll call. Is there discussion on the amendments? Alderman Lopez.
Just gratitude. This is a great idea. It was a little bit problematic just because there was already a Veterans Way and a Veterans Bridge, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't honoring veterans in a way that could put their lives in danger if there's a 911 situation. So the city departments really stepped up and made sure that they covered all the angles, they figured out any other streets that might have similar sounding names. And that's what the amendment is about, is just making sure that we handle this thoroughly and in one shot.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, I just wondered if Alderman Lopez could explain to us what the the details of the amendment, how it got amended at the committee.
Yeah, I thought you were in the committee, but, you know, Alderman Jettie, I apologize, I can't pull up a map here. But the Broad Street Parkway goes from Pine Street to Broad Street, and the original motion was to rename that to be the Veterans Parkway. The, one of the amendments is to change it to Veterans Memorial Parkway, so that it's not confused with the bridge. There's a bridge that connects Nashua to Hudson, and that has a similar name as well. And then initially, the legislation before us had changed the road along the National Guard Armory to Armory Street, which is virtually identical to Amory Street when you say it, so they had changed that as well, and so that, I believe, is Independence Way now, or Drive. So that's the summary in a nutshell.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The motion is to amend. Further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 As and zero Ns.
And that motion carries. Alderman Lopez.
I would now like to make a motion for final passage of R. 21121, as amended.
Motion is for final passage as amended. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Lopez.
So I just, I think it's important to do, particularly now, because last year, we didn't have the same kind of celebration or recognition for veterans that we've done in the past, and this year, the organizers weren't comfortable at the time we need to begin organizing, doing that as well. I know that the Parkway has a program already in place by DPW where families can can submit their, the names of their loved ones and images to honor them, and I think that's a great, it's a great program, because it lets people throughout the year consider the contributions and sacrifices that our veterans have made. And I think in a lot of ways is superior to a parade. I know that the public likes to come out and celebrate and show that visible sign of support, and I think we need to get back to that when it's safe to do so. But I also think throughout the year, veterans are still struggling with issues like post-traumatic stress disorder, with overly convoluted expectations of how they can access the basic healthcare that they were promised on discharge. There's a lot of areas that we don't quite meet the bar when it comes to treating our veterans as best we can. And I don't think anything that's going to change unless we do something to constantly remind ourselves that they are a priority. There's something that we're proud of here in Nashua, and that there are people that we want to welcome into our community, so I think this is a good step. I think we can have ongoing discussions about things that we do well, like our city approaching functional zero with veterans homelessness, ensuring that any homeless veteran has a pathway to shelter within like 24 hours, if not faster, of experiencing homelessness. There are a lot of things that we do really well here, but there's always going to be more that we can do for people who who basically committed to give everything for us to do business every day and live in the community that we enjoy. Thank you.
Is there discussion on the motion for final passage as amended? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm having technical difficulties. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 As and zero Ns.
And that motion carries. Resolution 21121 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21127, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $5,408,000 for the fiscal year 2021, Cities Sewer Infrastructure Program.
Lemon Schmidt. Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of Resolution 21127 by roll call, and I'd like to speak to that motion.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you. We've learned that in Nashua, what we need to do is maintain infrastructure. We have seen that with our roads. Once we got back on track, it's made quite a difference here. The same thing goes for this resolution. Maintaining will cost a lot less in the long run, and I'm so glad that this is being brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Discussion? Seeing no one, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 As and zero Ns.
And that motion carries. Resolution 21-127 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21129, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $1,439,929 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activity, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, HOPWA.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move for final passage of R. 21129 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 21129. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow. Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries, and resolution 21129 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R 21131, authorizing the city of Nashville to enter into contracts with Nashville Community College, Riviera University, Town of Hudson, the Plus Company, and the Sohegan Valley Transportation Collaborative for transit services.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I move for a final passage of R 21131 by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Jettie.
So this is a regular contract that the Nashville Transit enters into with Nashville Community College, Riviera University, the Town of Hudson, the Plus Company, and the Sohegan Valley Transportation Collaborative, whereby we provide transit services and they pay us money, which provides revenue to operate the Nashville Transit system, and it also enables Nashville Transit to be eligible for federal funding because we are a regional transit service. And so this was approved by the budget review committee, and I asked my fellow Alderman to support it.
Thank you, Alderman Jettie. Discussion. Alderman Lopez.
Just to add on to what Alderman Jettie has brought up, basically, this offsets the expense of having public transportation for taxpayers in Nashville by including a wider pool. It also uses the opportunity to engage people who may not be as familiar with our bus system to incentivize using it. So students at Riviera, for example, who may not necessarily live in Nashville, but be from other other communities and be living on campus or that type of stuff, this is their connection to Nashville. This is how they get to know Nashville. This is how they decide that they're going to live here. This is also how they spend money down here. So there's a lot of, a lot of value in this particular program, and then as Alderman Jettie pointed out, it also qualifies us for federal money, which is always a good return on investment, because in New Hampshire, we pay out more than we get back from the federal government.
Further discussion? Seeing none? The motion is for final passage of resolution 21131 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 21131 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R 21133, authorizing the city of Nashville to enter into a joint powers agreement of Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, like to make a motion for final passage of R 21133 by roll call.
The motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? I think this is a great opportunity for the city. The mayor brought it before, brought it to us, you know, several months back, and I'm really looking forward to how we can roll this program out to our citizens. Motion before us is for final passage. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries, and resolution 21133 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance O 2156, amendments to the ordinances relative to street name changes of Veterans Drive and the Broad Street Parkway.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to amend 0-21-056 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Committee on Infrastructure by roll call.
Motion is to amend with the Goldenrod copy. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, the motion to amend, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Karen.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of 0-21-056 as amended by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance 2156 as amended. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries, and ordinance 21 O 56 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of ordinance O 2158, amending the floodplain management land use ordinances.
Alderman Tanza.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R 21058.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance 2158 by roll call. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, I just think it's important for the public to know that the that this change in the ordinances is, you know, has to do with the flood insurance, and the flood insurance program recommended that we, that we make these changes. This will enable us to maintain a rating probably, you know, better than most communities, which also enables people to get a break on if they need flood insurance. It, by adopting these changes, we're complying with, you know, with the policies and procedures of the National Flood Insurance Program, which enables our citizens who do need flood insurance to, to get a lower rate on that, on that flood insurance. So this is a great benefit to to those people who need flood insurance, and it also enables us to to make sure that, you know, buildings that are built, new buildings or improvements to buildings, that they comply with the flood insurance requirements, so that, you know, damage by flood is lessened.
Thank you, Alderman Jettie. Motion is for final passage. Further discussion. Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I had asked whether or not this would, by moving the floodplains, would it change any of the the expectations or requirements for developments in that area to manage any kind of remediation or environmental hazards, specifically concerned about the Mohawk Tannery or the expansion of the riverfront landing properties, and the answer I was given was nope, because it's still going to flood, so they need to build it so that it survives a flood.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Ordinance 21-58 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of ordinance O 2159, authorizing a right turn only lane on Amherst Street to Cotton Road Connector.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of ordinance O 21059 by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, anybody that's familiar with this corner, which is near the Press, the sandwich shop, there are three lanes, and the right-hand lane, which is meant for turning on the cotton, people get in that lane and then try to merge, and there's no lane on the other side of the intersection, and it's been very hazardous, including trailer trucks I've seen try to do that, merge, and then the car, three lanes of cars get squished into two, and I'm surprised there haven't been more accidents there, but I have the concurrence of the city engineer for these changes, and they asked that we pass it tonight.
Any further discussion? On ordinance 2159. Seeing none, motion is for final passage of ordinance 2159 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries, and ordinance 2159 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of ordinance O 2160, no parking at certain times and no on-street student drop-off or pickup on sections of Cleveland Street.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, like to make a motion for final passage of ordinance O 21060 by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dow.
So this is the Fairgrounds Middle School, part of the project. We have developed a holding lane for the new parents' drop-off. We don't want any parking in there during the school hours, because that would make the holding lane useless. Also, we don't want, Cleveland Street is extremely busy, and it's going to be paved very shortly for final paving, and we don't want students dropped off in zones that would make it dangerous for them getting into the school. So we're going to put signs for no drop-off of students in these areas, and this has been approved by the city engineer, Dan Hudson.
Motion is for final passage by roll call. For any discussion. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, and I agree totally with my fellow Alderman, Alderman Dow, but one other Alderman who is not here this evening, Alderman Clemens, did have a concern, because Fairgrounds Junior High is a voting place, and that was discussed at the infrastructure meeting, and allowances will be made on that, and to our friends of our community who do have handicapped children, if you remember, there is a handicap playground there, and this will not affect their fund to able to access that facility. Thank you.
Alderman Dow.
I just want to follow up along with that. We did put several new handicap spots in the new parents' parking area that are adjacent to the handicap park playground, so that it's much easier access for them to get to that playground from that higher level, so.
Any further discussion? The motion is for final passage of ordinance 2160 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Ordinance 2160 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of resolution R 21137, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $352,780 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services grant activity fiscal year 2022, regional public health network services.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Dow, Alderman Tanza, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Lou, Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Karen.
Alderman Karen.
Thank you.
And myself, oh, Alderman Cleaver. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of resolution R 21138, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $25,563.84 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety State Homeland Security Grant Program into Police Grant Activity 2020 Homeland Security Grant Program.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Dow, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderwoman Lou, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of resolution R 21139, authorizing the bus pull-off and shelter easement on Bridge Street and temporary construction easement and use easement agreement on Sanders Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dow, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Harriet Gathright. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Committee on Infrastructure and the National City Planning Board.
First reading of resolution R 21140, authorizing the city of Nashville to enter into a contract with the Town of Merrimack for transit services.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dow, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Lou. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Finance Committee.
First reading of resolution R 21141, authorizing the expenditure of up to $24,500 from the Conservation Fund for work on the Sanon Brook Trail.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dow, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Schmidt. Anyone else?
Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderwoman Kelly and myself. Given its Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of resolution R twenty one one forty-two relative to the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two proposed budget for the city of Nashua General Enterprise and Special Revenue Funds.
Additional sponsors. Given its first reading, did did someone? Alderman Harriet Gathright. Anyone else? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing for Wednesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty at seven P M to be held at Natural High School North in the auditorium.
First reading of resolution R twenty one one forty-three proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to the manner of appointments to the National Board of Police Commissioners.
Additional sponsors. Given its fir- uh. Given its first, Alderman Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not quite sure how to read this. Uh I move that resolution R twenty one one forty-three is necessary. But I believe you'd be doing the assigning, correct?
No, you finish reading that if you'd like.
It is assigned to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee and a special Board of Alderman public hearing is scheduled for Monday, June seventh, twenty twenty-one at seven P M by roll call.
Is there discussion on that? Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, I have, uh I guess this would be a parliamentary inquiry to uh. Attorney Bolton, if I may.
You sure can.
So the uh this motion. Uh is to. Is is that this resolution is necessary? And um so I'm wondering, you know, whether is is that just a procedural matter? You know, the the question of whether it's necessary or not, isn't that something that that we're going to determine after the public hearing and the the um. The minis- Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee has a chance to weigh in on it, make a recommendation, and then we vote on it. Finally, um that's my first question and and secondly, this this resolution is not to change anything. About how the police commission is uh. Is uh is selected, it's it's to place before the voters the question whether or not the voters would like. A change to occur. Um so I think, so if Attorney Bolton could clarify that for us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Attorney Bolton.
Yes, Alderman Jettie, you're correct that the uh declaration of necessary. Is just because of the way the state statute on how municipalities amend a charter uh is written. So. The relevant provision is RSA forty-nine B colon five. Which begins the municipal officers, which in our case in Nashua is the Board of Alderman. So the municipal officers may determine that one or more amendments to the municipal charter are necessary. And shall by order provide for notice at a public hearing thereon. Then the statute goes on to go through all of the other necessary steps. The last step uh is a vote by the voters. Preliminary to that, uh working backwards is the determination by the Board of Alderman to place the question. On the ballot and submit it to the voters. But before you ever get to that, you have to have a public hearing. You have to uh determine whether you want to modify the proposed amendment. If you're s- if after the public hearing, you are satisfied with the wording. You you make that known. Uh if you are unsatisfied with the wording and you make modifications to the proposed amendment, a further public hearing must be held. Once the wording is finalized by the board. The proposed amendment is submitted to three state officials. The New Hampshire Attorney General, Secretary of State and Commissioner of the Department of Revenue Administration. For their determination as to whether the proposed amendment conflicts with any general laws of the state of New Hampshire, that is the. Uh statute or the New Hampshire Constitution. Following. Basically, the green light from those three state officials, assuming we get to that stage. Uh then the uh board could vote at that point as to whether or not to place it on. The ballot and submit it to the voters. You never get to any of those steps unless there's a preliminary finding that it's necessary, so. It's necessary in the sense that if you're even going to consider it further, you have to make the determination that it's necessary. At least to study the situation.
Thank you.
You're all set, Alderman Jettie?
Yeah, yes, I I just want the uh. You know, I I appreciate the clarification from Attorney Bolton, so as I understand it, our voting in favor of this tonight. All all that means is that um we're we're allowing it to 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 proceed. You know, for all of those further steps that have um. Been um explained by Attorney Bolton, this is just the beginning, just allows us to even consider whether or not. A charter change is warranted or not. By voting in favor of this, we are we are not voting to change anything, at least not at this point. If I understood him correctly.
I think you did.
Thank you.
That's what I understood too. Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
Uh just for my part, I'm voting in favor of the public having a chance to weigh in on this, do the public hearing. And then again, uh if it proceeds to the uh referendum, I think this is an issue that needs to have citywide um accurate uh polling in the term, in the form of voting.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, um Madam President. I. I've been following the uh agenda along and I didn't think we were voting on this tonight.
We're voting on sending it forward to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee and for them to schedule a public hearing.
Okay, um just if you could help me, I, this is kind of unusual, right, for a new new business to actually be voted upon to. To send it to committee? Or have I just?
Well, it's a charter change, so I believe we have to have a public hearing and in order to do that, we have to pass this along.
Okay, but but so we don't just send it to a committee, we have to vote to send it to the committee?
Because it's a charter change, yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I also just wanted some clarification. Um this would be if it were to go through all those steps, Attorney Bolton, through Madam President. This would be a binding ballot question, correct?
Yes, the voter's decision is determinative. It's binding, it's yes or no by the voters and that controls.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. Since um since we're going to vote today, I do have a question. Um if. Could one of the endorsers or the or the person who um brought this motion forward? Explain why there might be a need? Because if that's what we're voting on, whether there's a need.
Well, we'd vote on that only after the public hearing. I mean, we're we're voting to send this to the committee and for them to hold a public hearing. We're not voting and saying, yes, we agree with this, with this process, with the charter change.
So I apologize. I think this is the first time a charter change has come before me and it didn't look any different on the agenda, so I wasn't aware that. Um, okay, so. We're going to vote whether we want to even pay attention to this, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Lopez.
I mean, I think the uh legislation is here, so personally, I'm voting in favor of having the public comment. In order to, if we need to have it go before the referendum, um and I would like to go on record as voting in favor of following the law. In order to change the police commissioners, if we choose to do that, since this is all due to state statutes governing this process.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Lou.
Well, it sounds like a quite a protracted process and I wonder, since there has been a. Some type of a polling done. Could we know how the polling turned out? I understand it seems to be um a poll sent out to perhaps Mayor Donchus's email. List, but that would help me uh if I knew, you know, if that apparently uh. Mayor Donchus thought it was a good idea to get that information. Um could we have the results of the poll um from your? Your chosen list or your?
Mayor, did you wish to speak on that? You're on mute, Mayor.
I get halfway and I forgot I'm on mute. In thinking about this and talking with some of the aldermen who. Contacted me about it. We, I thought it would be worth, you know, sounding out the people that I'm in contact with at least regarding what they thought. So about nineteen hundred and some people um got the email and opened it, about six hundred people. Voted. Uh the. Two questions were did, now we're in a history where there have been a hundred and thirty years of the National Police Commission and there's only been one woman appointed in a hundred and thirty years. So I asked the question, should uh women, should there be a mandatory number of women on the on the commission? And that sort of tracked the current requirement that there has to be a party balance. You can't have more than two members. Of the same party on the commission now, according to the charter. And that came out fairly close. Uh it was in favor of mandatory uh female members, but it was fifty-one forty-nine or so. And the other question was asked, well, who should make the appointment? Should it be, continue to be the uh governor? And the council up in Concord, or should it be local control, uh local appointments, the mayor and the Board of Alderman? Now that came out quite. Decidedly in favor of local appointments, uh more than two to one. So um. And I think the exact numbers were that about six hundred people voted, so it was like four hundred and ten to one hundred and ninety-four. Of the people who decided to express an opinion.
You all said Alderwoman Lou?
Um, yes, but uh. Actually, a follow-up. Um have. Have there been a lot of females that have been overlooked, you know, um? I'm sorry, presented as a candidate and overlooked?
Well, I don't know. This is a very political and secretive process. So what happens is there's something goes on between the counselor. And the governor, usually, as I've heard it over the decades, often it's a friend of the governor's counselor who gets. Not in every case, it depends on the relationship between the governor's counselor and the and the governor. But somehow, I've never heard of an application process or any kind of vetting process or anything like that. And um so uh the, someone proposes a member and then the council votes on it, so. I don't know if women have been considered. Uh I don't know if uh who's been considered, I don't know who's applied, I don't know, have any, no idea who's expressed an interest. The. But I do know that there are many qualified women in Nashua. Who could be appointed and serve very competently on the Nashua Police Commission. So what this, but because there seem to be a divided opinion on that, this does not mandate to mandate women, it just says. That the, it expands the uh number of appointments from three to five and says that the membership should reflect the citizenship of the community. And uh so, and it says that merit qualifications and. A history of community service should be considered. Uh and um I think that uh using that procedure, we could arrive at uh a group of appointees that would be. That would serve the community and the police department very well. I would point out that there used to be many other cities. A number of other cities, Manchester, Laconia, Berlin, and other cities who had the governor appoint the police commissioners. All but Nashua have abandoned that process. Portsmouth was the last one about twenty, twenty-five years ago. Opted for a local procedure as it has all the other cities. So of the two hundred and some communities in New Hampshire, we are the only one. Where the uh either the commissioner, whoever po- or whoever supervises the police department is not selected locally.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderwoman Kelly and then Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Thank you. I'll keep my remarks to the um. The issue at hand, which is whether we should take this up, and I think that the conversation from the mayor, the study that he put out. I, we won't call it a study, brief survey. Um and the idea that, you know, a woman had never been appointed, but. Also, nobody of color that I am aware of has ever been appointed. I think is enough to merit at least a conversation on this. Uh as the mayor just pointed out. The new wording talks about having it be reflective of our community and one of the things I talk about all the time about our current Board of Aldermen is how proud I am on. How we are really good swath of our city. Um people of color, people who are under the age of forty, uh we're more than. We're almost exactly half men and women. And so I think that kind of representation allows. Uh for different experiences and ideas to come forward. So at the very least, I think we need to consider this um and move it forward.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Thank you, Madam President. Um first of all, I'm going to say ditto to my colleagues at spoke. But through you two, Mr. Mayor, did the survey only go out to women?
No, no, it went to uh everybody. But but it, you know, it asked the question, should there be a minimum number of women on the?
Right, I understood that. That's what I thought, but I understood um. My colleague to say that the ser- the survey that you sent out to your women friend, and I didn't think it was appropriate?
No, it wasn't to both genders, people of all political party.
Okay, I just thought I would ask. Thank you.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. Um I may have been misheard. I I think I said a curated um uh list. But no, I didn't mean to say that it was females only.
Anyone else? Before we vote on. That this is necessary and we will schedule a public hearing from Monday, June seventh at seven P M. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none with the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
No.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jerry.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Lars.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
You have ten yeas and three nays.
And that motion carries. First reading. Alderman Karen. Alderman Karen.
Uh, yeah, I would ask that, uh, R twenty-one, one forty-three also be sent to the police commissioners, please.
I don't know that. Can you weigh in on that, Attorney Bolton?
It's up to the board. There's nothing, uh, legal or illegal about doing it or not doing.
I'm not inclined to do so. Um, I think it's self-serving if we. Send this to the commissioners. Alderman Lou.
I, I didn't, I was going to ask what she meant by that. I see. Okay.
Yeah, Alderman Karen, I, I, I'm not inclined to do so unless the board feels otherwise.
Yeah, I just feel they should have a chance to, to look it over and.
Oh, they'll have a chance to weigh in. I'm sure they will be following this very closely.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Alderman Dow.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll weigh in. There's no doubt about it in my mind. Uh, however, um. If we want a formal response from them, we'd have to refer it to them, but that's up to you. The other thing I might point out is that the current board of commissioners were all appointed by.
Maggie Hassan.
Maggie Hassan.
Yeah, Maggie Hassan.
And reappointed by the current governor and, and.
What that got to do with it?
Oh, I mean, if, if there was an issue with somebody being appointed, I, I will say that I, I, I believe there should be a woman. On, on there. Um, I also think that it's probably not a problem expanding it to five. But, uh, as I'll discuss when we send it to committee, I don't. Believe it should be under local control. Uh, because the, the, uh. There's a lot of reasons, which I'm sure that we'll hear in the committee.
Alderman Lopez.
Um, as I understand the legislation, it's basically just to open the discussion and to have public comment, and then. We ultimate act if all things move in that direction is to have a referendum. So I am never opposed to letting the voters actually. Have a chance to vote on things. And I think more than the board, the police commissioner, more than the alderman, they're probably the ones who should be. Uh, weighing in on this. Um, I don't think it'd be a bad idea for, uh, any modifications or recommendations. That they suggest or, um. Or, or that the alderman in reviewing that what is going to be on the referendum, uh, be considered as well. So there's a lot of room for discussion here.
Anyone else? Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Now we're voting to, um.
That motion passed ten to three.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
The first reading, if I may, of resolution R twenty-one, one forty-four. Authorizing the purchase of property located at El Pine Street, map seventy-seven, lot five.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Dow, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Harry Gaffray, Alderman Lopez. And myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the National City Planning Board.
First reading of resolution R twenty-one, one forty-five. Authorizing the interfund transfer of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. From the Broad Street Parkway Capital Project Activity to the Nashua Mill Yard Dog Park Capital Project Activity. For the purchase of property located at El Pine Street, map seventy-seven, lot five.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Dow, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Lopez. And I will co-sponsor this as well. I think it's a good idea. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will, uh, given its first reading, I'll sign it to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance O twenty-one sixty-two, establishing a handicapped parking space in front of Three Crown Street.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Dow. Alderman Harry Gaffray, Alderman O'Brien. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the committee on infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance O twenty-one sixty-three, establishing a no parking zone on the south side of Newton Drive.
Additional sponsors. Seeing none, given its first reading, I'll sign that to the committee on infrastructure.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may, did we actually vote on, um, twenty-one, one forty-three? To.
Yes, we reported ten in favor and three against.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Period for general public comment.
Lori Ordolano.
Okay.
Forty-one Berkeley Street, um, quickly going through, I'm not in favor of the dog park. I just think, um. Money spent right now is not the thing to do. Uh, the mayor spoke briefly, briefly about the secretive process of. How these commissioners are selected. I think we have our own secretive process going on down here when we have a charter change being proposed. For the school makeup of the elected members, moving it toward a fifteen-member board with alder, with at-large seats. I really don't think that that works in my idea of transparent and open government. I know it doesn't violate an open meeting because it was handled by aldermen making the change for the school board, but I don't like that process at all. Um, your, your, um. Your amendment for this police thing is very confusing. Um, you know, the, uh. Attorney Bolton wrote it up that the Board of Aldermen must hold an initial vote to determine if the amendment is necessary. Well, tonight, and then it says, if it's determined necessary, the Board of Aldermen must order a notice be given for the public hearing. Well, we started off this discussion with the chairman woman saying that June seventeen, twenty-twenty-one would be the hearing at Nashua North. It's as our, it's as if you already determined it was necessary. And I'm not certain if this vote tonight is why you determined it was necessary. But I found it totally lacking in understanding why you're doing this, why it came about. And, um, why we need it. And I don't know when it goes to committee. I can't tell if the committee meeting to personnel and, uh, affairs. Is going to happen before the hearing or after the hearing, and will it come back from committee? To the board such that the board will discuss it. I don't like the idea of a public hearing without being able to hear. Why you think it's necessary across the board. And if Alderman Lou hadn't opened the discussion up the way she had. By asking about the survey, I don't think there would have been any discussion at all. I think for something so significant, there should be a lot more talk going on and a lot more, um, solid reasoning behind. Why we think this will improve our police force. One other thing, your I T office, I think is in disarray. You've got some big problems in there with cybersecurity. There's hacking going on of emails. Emails are lost, appointments are lost, citizens are being arrested when they go to city hall for not having an appointment. That they might in fact have because your email server is being hacked. You had on the table to establish an I T study committee. It's been tabled in committee. For months and months, you really should pull that resolution twenty oh twenty-one off the table. Figure out what you need to do and get somebody in there highly qualified to deal with your I T issues, serious problem. And you've got a serious lack of clerical staffing in your legal office to provide assistance to those four attorneys and deal with right to no's. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to give public comment? Okay, seeing no one, remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen. Okay, no one?
No, you're not getting off that easy. I was just, I'm muting.
All right, Tom. Alderman Lopez.
Um, so I just wanted to announce that we are moving forward with the Tree Street Block Party, uh, on June twenty-seventh. Um, it's going to feature a food stall tournament. Um, the kids who are participating are going to be wearing masks, the public and, um. The, uh, people who are, who want to watch are also encouraged to do so. The event will encourage mask wearing, although there isn't a city ordinance requiring it. And, um, we're hoping to kind of bring together a lot of different people, uh, to address. Uh, other types of healthcare needs in addition to the pandemic, which has largely dominated our. Our focus this past year, um, other issues like adverse childhood experiences, um, food security. Uh, we have a lot of issues in Nashua that, uh, we need to address. We need to make sure that people are getting fed. Families are finding shelter, that children are growing up, um, you know, with access to the supports they need. A lot of is communication, and that's a lot of the ways that blocks communicate is through things like this. So we're working very closely with the, um. Uh, with the Public Health Department, uh, to make sure that this is a safe, uh, and helpful event for everybody. Um, we already have sponsors, uh, neighbor works in Southern Hampshire Medical Center, so, um. Looking good so far. Uh, if anything happens citywide. Prior to that, which looks like it may be a risk, then we will postpone it. If not, pull the plug. But mark your calendars. We're, we're hoping for the best. Um, I think at the beginning, as I said, June twenty-seventh, I was a little too excited. I meant June twenty-sixth. And then additionally, we are working on, uh, revising the murals in French Park. Um, in keeping with their heritage, the older murals that we did, uh, degraded. So we're working with the Richelieu Club. Uh, we've identified a number of, uh, prominent Franco-Nashtrons, I guess you could call them, uh, over, that have contributed to Nashua's history. Um, and we're hoping that we'll have that project done in the park, uh, for dedication on June twenty-fifth. So everybody's welcome to follow along with that. And, and if you're interested, uh, participate. Um, finally, I know a lot of the Board of Aldermen are concerned, confused, um, as to what we're doing with the masking ordinance. I have brought it up at every single public health, uh, meeting, and I have urged the need to. Start considering the issue, to evaluate what we can do, look at best practices elsewhere. But start figuring out whether we want this thing to just expire, whether it needs to transition, whether we need to leave a back door in case. You know, some, some variant shows its head. We don't have to start all over again from scratch. Um, so the. Board of Health did vote to, um, have a special meeting. Um, I haven't been told when that meeting will be yet, um, but. Um, I think all aldermen, uh, could probably coordinate with Director Bagley to, to make sure that they're in the loop on that if they're interested. Um, so that we can start addressing that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'd like to welcome back Alderman Cleaver. You were, you were very much missed. It is good to see you here. Um, yes, I'm hearing a lot of questions about the mask ordinance. And we're doing so much better. We are doing remarkably better. And as far as Massachusetts, that was a real issue for us as on the border. They had absolutely no deaths today, which is, uh, remarkable. Looks like we're moving forward because of, yeah, the vaccinations. And one more thing, there's, there's a lot of things that I really enjoy about being an alderman, but one that really makes me smile every single time. Is when someone steps up to volunteer on a committee. It is just the best feeling in the world. Thank you, everybody who does that. It's just tremendous. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt. Anyone else? Alderman, Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. Um, I also want to welcome back, um, Alder, Alderman Cleaver. It's good to see your face. Um, I wanted to share a couple of weeks ago, actually, it was, um. Arbor Day, um. Dante, I believe his la, last name is Castellano. He's a, a student in town and he organized a tree planting. Um, which I helped him with. I planted five trees, but, um, he gathered, uh, volunteers to plant over a hundred trees for. Just residents who bought the trees from him. So we're replenishing the tree stock in Nashua. And I thought that was a really great public service that he did. Um. I also wanted to mention that, um, I think at the last meeting, um, or maybe two meetings before, I expressed concern about. Um, concern, and I've asked for information on how, um, high levels of. Of our overtime is going to affect our future retirement, uh, costs in the city. I did speak with the mayor personally, but I haven't heard, I haven't heard back from you. Um, I think that you had indicated you needed to look into it. Um, I wonder if we have any information on that now? Um, because I continue to be, you know, just, I'd like for it to be looked at and at least responded. To. Thank you.
Mayor, did you want to respond to that? You're on mute, mayor.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. We're talking mostly about, uh. The departments that have a lot of overtime, those being fire and police. The answer is that when people work overtime, even on the pandemic, even when they receive, uh. Uh, that they do in those situations, um. It, it contributes to. So the way, the way, so the answer is yes, it does impact, uh, pensions, but. Um, you know, that's just part of the. The need for the overtime.
Alderman Lou.
Well, my, when I first brought this up, my, my point, um, Mayor Donchus was that it seems to me for some of these. Um, tasks, we don't need highly skilled firefighters to be, um, doing that. And is, and so wouldn't that be a way that we could protect or lessen the future cost of, um. The retirement expenses.
Well, it might affect it slightly, but I, I'm not sure that it's, uh, easy to find. You know, a group of competent people to supervise some of these clinics, you know, the. Most of this overtime occurs at both the, uh, testing clinics. Where people are tested for COVID nineteen and more recently, the vaccination clinics. Uh, you know, when you go to the clinic, you know, there's. There, uh, needs to be people who. Direct. Where, where a lot of people coming in at the same time need to go and where they should wait and. Um, could other people do it? You know, I suppose so, but I think people with some level of training and, you know, uh, knowledge, experience. Would, it would need to be someone like that. And I'm just not sure we have. An alternate group of people that would really serve the same function.
You all said Alderman Lou? Anyone else? Alderman Dow.
Yeah, I was expecting Obie to jump in, but the, the firemen, um, that were at the vaccination centers. First of all, all of their overtime, including the pension costs, were covered by federal dollars. And also the firemen are all, uh, E M T trained. So they're out in the parking lot, uh. And if somebody has an issue with the first fifteen minutes, they make them stay after their shot. Uh, they can immediately handle that and get a, a nurse or a doctor to come and, and, and so. They're not just directing traffic. They're there for a reason. The other thing is, uh, a member of the public called me a liar for saying that, uh, the police overtime was covered by federal dollars. There are four major categories of police overtime that are covered, were covered by federal dollars, including overtime pension costs. And that did not come out of the city. And, uh, there's, there's data available for that. Um, some of it's from grants. Um, so I, I think that, uh. The overtime cost that we're talking about via the pandemic is, is not a hit on the city per se, as far as the budget's concerned. So. Uh, just the only one to say.
Alderman O'Brien.
Uh, thank you. I wasn't going to say much. Uh, you know, I can appreciate, uh, Alderman, uh, Lou's concern, but. Um, like Alderman Dow said, in my thirty-five-year career on the fire department. Today's requirement to be a firefighter is a minimum, you have to be, uh, an E M T. Uh, some are even paramedics. Which, uh, basically isn't to advance, uh, medical, uh, and everything. But whether they're sitting there doing it, directing traffic or just breathing. I think you lost, some people have lost sight of why they're there. And because a certain drug, which is the vaccine, is being administered to the person. It, some people. some people who may not know can have an allergic reaction. Now, out of the major forms of shock, one of the one that is very dangerous is antiphylactic shock. Basically, what ends up, and now I'm reverting back to my EMT days, but basically, your airway constricts is one of the symptoms, and you cannot breathe, and that is why the firefighters are there. Fortunately, it's a rare event, but it does happen. And when you have nurses that are going out because of the thousands of people that they inoculated, given the shots in the arms, the firefighters were there mostly just to make sure if anybody was feeling ill or some signs of a shock. So fortunately, it wasn't anything major that I'm aware of, but that question could be referred to to the fire chief. But what their job was highly skilled. After sitting there and taking medical courses for 35 years, it is a very complete skill set. People rely on it. I have had people wrap their human bodies around trees, and I think they were very appreciative of my skill set and trying to extricate them from vehicles. And so the firefighters, I think they did a great job there in assisting the public. And again, it was predominantly a cautionary measure. So I was glad that they were there. And like Alderman Dow says, it was covered with the federal dollars that was granted with the inoculation, so there wasn't too much of a municipal impact. And those that followed within the finance and the budget committee saw that because we did a vote to approve that, and the money went back to the fire department. If you remember, that was, I think, Chief, Assistant Chief Buckson came to that very same meeting speaking to have that money compensated. So, and that was the reason that he gave. So again, that is the reason. So thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Alderman Lopez and then Alderman Lou.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the firefighters are kind of, you don't want them to have to prove their worth because that means there's a fire. Equally, you don't want them to have to respond to an emergency and look busy, but they are the ones who are likely to transport somebody in need of healthcare or experiencing a medical emergency to the hospital, and it's only prudent that we have them on hand. So I appreciate their presence. I think we do have a lot of fiscal priorities to be looking at coming up. And I mean, some of that may, may be a tough decision, but I would much rather look at trying to cut how often we're watering the plants or how often we're buffling the eagle than how often we have firefighters available to respond in an emergency. Thank you.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify or point out that anytime you, anytime you manage a pension system, you really don't, you really don't know if you're level funding it. So the, the federal government is paying their, what they typically put forward per hour of work toward their pension. I understand that, but there's always a, there's always a large risk that the management of those funds is not going to yield the, the cash flow that they're going to need in their retirement. And I just think it's a big risk. It's a risk that we have to take on with our, with our public servants. But in this case, we don't have to take that risk on. I know we, we need, we need a single emergency, you know, emergency worker at a site. But I just think this is a lot of risk to take on to have, you know, to have this much overtime that we don't really bargain for originally, we don't budget for. We don't know whether we're going to be able to grow these pensions. If pensions were that easy, then we wouldn't have a pension problem right now. And that is the biggest problem affecting, you know, our tax rate that there is, is the pension problem. And it just seems to me obvious that we've got a huge roomful of people who are trained to address emergencies. I mean, they're giving shots, but we have doctors there. Anyways, wanted to make it clear that just because you're paying a certain point into the pension, doesn't mean that you're, you're, there's no risk to it. You've put, this is going to grow to exactly what you need. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, committee announcements. Alderman Dow.
Yes, the first Budget Review Committee for the FY22 budget is going to be next Thursday, May 20th at 7:00 PM on Zoom. We'll be covering general government, emergency preparedness, and administrative services. I would like all the members of the Budget Committee to let me know if there are any conflicts with this schedule so that I can see if we have any problem nights. I hope we don't, but let me know one way or the other if there are any issues with any particular nights so that we can make sure that we have a quorum. Thank you.
Any other committee announcements? No, seeing none. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just contemplating Alderman's Dow. There goes a lot of evenings with the Budget Committee, but looking forward to it. Madam President, I would like to be recognized for a motion, and at the May 11th to 2021 meeting of the Board of Aldermen, be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No, keep it going forever.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Lars.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Catherine.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 12 yeas and one nay.
And we are adjourned at 9:27 PM. Thanks, everyone.